Council meeting. I'd like to welcome everyone here tonight, including those in our gallery. I'd like to begin today's meeting by acknowledging the traditional owners of the land which now comprises Greater Shepparton. We pay respect to their tribal elders, we celebrate their continuing culture and we acknowledge the memory of their ancestors. Item number two, our privacy notice. This public meeting is being streamed live via our Facebook page and made available for public access on our website, along with the official minutes of this meeting. All care is taken to maintain your privacy, however, as a visitor in the public gallery, it is assumed that your consent is given in the event that your image is broadcast to the public. It is also assumed that your consent is given to the use and disclosure of any information that you share at the meeting, including personal or sensitive information to any person who accesses those recordings or minutes. Councillors, do we have any apologies tonight?
Yes, Madam Mayor, councillor Bruce Jevonetti.
Thank you very much. Note there's an apology, I have a second please. Councillor Hayesman will now go to the vote, all those in favour, against, motion carried. Do we have any declarations of conflicts of interest tonight? No?
Do, Madam Mayor. Item 10.4, I have a direct interest.
Okay, thank you very much for that. Confirmation of minutes, item number five, is any item of the minutes opposed? No, would a councillor like to move the recommendation, please? Councillor Adam?
I'll move the recommendation on page one as a motion that minis the ordinary council meeting held 21st of May 2019 and special council meeting held 4th of June 2019, as circulated, be confirmed.
Thank you very much, do I have a second please? Councillor Sutton will now go to the vote, all those in favour, against, motion carried, unopposed. Item number six, public question time, none tonight. Councillors will now go to page two. Item 7.1, planning application 2018. Sorry, we'll just have to postpone the meeting for a few moments, do we just postpone the meeting? 7.1 on page two, which is planning application 2018, sorry, 2018-218, Gilston Abattoir. Could someone please like to move the recommendation?
I'll move that, Madam Mayor, that the council receive and note the petition relating to planning application 2018-218, Gilston Abattoir.
Thank you very much, do I have a second please?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'll second that.
Councillor Hayesman? Any councillor would you like to speak?
Oh, this is democracy at work here, these people have their right to have their note to their petition and that's what we're doing.
Very much, councillor Hayesman, would you like to speak to the motion? Any councillor would like to speak against the motion? Any councillor wish to speak to the motion? We will now go to the vote, all those in favour, against, motion carried, unopposed. Councillors will now go to page three, item 8.1, contract 1919, Central Park Netball Court variation. Would a councillor like to move a motion, please?
I'll move the recommendation contained on page three, Madam Mayor, the council approved the variation under contract 1919, Central Park Recreation Reserve Netball Court redevelopment for stabilisation works to the sub grade at a cost of $23,760 GST inclusive.
Thank you very much, councillor O'Savary, do I have a second please? Councillor Patterson. Councillor O'Savary, would you like to speak to the motion?
Look, Madam Mayor, not really, saving except for the fact that this is obviously something that's been found to be deficient, so it's just costing us a little bit of extra money to stabilise the works before we lay down the courts. Pretty self explanatory.
Okay, thank you very much, councillor Patterson, would you like to speak to the motion?
Just quickly, I'm glad they found it, they had similar problem, merriagm that wasn't corrected going back a few years and ever since then they've had trouble with the courts, so I'm glad they've identified it before the main seal goes down.
Thank you very much. Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak to the motion? We will now go to the vote, all those in favour, against, motion carried, unopposed. Councillors will now go to page six, item 8.2, request for approval for schedule of rates contract now exceeding chief executive officer's delegation, Cosgrove Three, go technical and testing authority, the recommendation is also on page six. Would a councillor like to move a motion, please? Councillor Summer?
I'd like to move the recommendation on page six, which says that the council approved the revised scope for the schedule of rates contract number 1743 for SMEC Australia Proprietary Limited for the provision of geotechnical investigations and testing authority and construction quality assurance assignment with a total estimated cost of $800,684 including GST.
Thank you very much, councillor Summer, do I have a second please? Councillor Patterson. Councillor Summer, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yeah, I won't get into too much of the technicalities around this, but some of us went out to have a look at this site and it's just a phenomenal project, it's huge. And the fact is that this has to be accurate to the absolute millimetre, so there's going to be some some ups and downs with our project and at the moment we've, we're needing to spend a bit more than our delegation requires and my understanding is that we can cover that with savings from other areas. Obviously, putting, collecting waste does come at a cost, we can't keep putting rubbish into the ground. It's, it doesn't disappear when you put it into the bin and people should probably consider that when it comes to recycling and using organics. So, we do need more airspace saving initiatives because of this cost to expand the life of this landfill as long as possible. It's going to benefit future generations. We went out there and saw there's going to be a waybridge and an education centre and today we went to a school for the Shepparton Statement and recycling was a top priority for young people. So, we should all be looking forward to this and looking forward to reading reports that outline future opportunities for the site, in particular the space reserve for pre-sorting. Yeah, it is positioning us as leaders in waste management because I don't think anyone can top the quality of what's going on out there.
Thank you very much, councillor Summer. Councillor Patterson, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, I would. I'll probably get myself and ourselves in the trouble here. I took part in a tour that we went out with councillor Summer, I had a good look, it's a magnificent facility. But the technical aspects of it are absolutely got, have gone far too far, as far as I'm concerned. There's dirt out there they've got to send to America to get tested, you know, all because it's got to read EPA regulations. It's just over the top, it's costing us millions. There is, you know, they're getting a $32 metre levy on our rubbish we have to drop, we didn't see any of that back. I think it's getting to the stage the EPA have really lost control of why they are there and they've become this unbelievable power to themselves, they are a very important part of our society and should be. But I think it's just going far too far, it's putting added burden onto rate payers with the costs and having said all that, it's probably going to cost us more now because they're probably a listener reporting this, we've been more told. Yes, they're going to hit the stage, someone's going to have to do something about it, it's getting out of hand.
Okay, thank you councillor Patterson. Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak to the motion? We will now go to the vote, all those in favour, against, motion carried, unopposed.
End the meeting again.
Councillors, we now go to page 10, item 9.1, endorsement of the Talagurupna Community Plan, five year review. The recommendation is also on page 10. Would a councillor like to move a motion, please? Councillor Summer?
I'd move the recommendation on page 10 as a motion, that the council one endorsed the 2019 Talagurupna Community Plan, five year review, to acknowledge the contribution that the Talagurupna community has made during the creation of the plan.
Thank you very much, do I have a second please? Councillor O'Savary, councillor Summer, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yeah, it's always a pleasure to read through community plans, we work really closely with the community and from Talagurupna we've got projects coming out of that such as walking tracks, silo art, community gardens, events and even a skate park, all those small things that can make a place into more of a tight knit, well-loved community. And also high priority, not unfunded at this stage, but we have advocacy roles and there may be budget bids later on and that is natural gas, sewage, improved drainage and water pressure. So, we'll work with the community to achieve these goals and not detract from its unique identity.
Thank you very much, councillor O'Savary, would you like to speak to the motion?
I think, Madam Mayor.
Any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak to the motion? We will now go to the vote, all those in favour, against, motion carried, unopposed. Councillors will now go to a special item tonight on the agenda, on page 14, item 9.2, we have the reconciliation action plan. Would a councillor like to move a motion, please? Councillor Adam?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to move that the council adopt the Greater Shepparton City Council reconciliation action plan reflect July 2019, June to 2020.
Thank you very much, do I have a second please? Councillor Summer. Councillor Adam, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, look, this is really an important motion here before us tonight. It's been a long time coming, I suppose we've been speaking about this for a few years now and we won't go through all the detail, but I think it's an important document, especially in our city or our municipality where we have almost 10% of our people are of indigenous origin, which is a magnificent adjunct to our city, obviously, and this action plan just reflects the way that we need to engage and support that community. Now, I'll just run through a couple of points, it's in the executive summary, but it's important to note that some of the points that this plan will actually acknowledge is the truth of Aboriginal and not Torres Strait Islander peoples' histories, developing and building relationships, which we've always tried to do anyway, but this actually formalises it, demonstrating respect, providing opportunities strategically outlining future directions council can take towards reconciliation and demonstrating leadership, so I think this is a fantastic first step and I hope that council will continue to support this into the future and actually take action.
Thank you very much, councillor Adam. Councillor Summer, would you like to speak to the motion?
There's been lots of movement, even nationally, in the area of reconciliation, which is great. There's talk of a treaty and there's the recent appointment of Ken Wyatt as Australia's First Minister for Indigenous Affairs. We know that this is the longest surviving culture. I think the latest date was hypothesised to be 120,000 years, so that's well deserving of respect. We have the largest indigenous population outside Melbourne, so it's wonderful to actually see a plan like this and one could argue that perhaps it's a little overdue. We've already adopted a Blongarder Agreement to increase employment opportunities in council for indigenous people and we anticipate that the Menara Centre of Excellence will also generate further pride in culture. Efforts to close the gap of disadvantage between indigenous and non-indigenous hasn't been successful in many areas. More disadvantage in terms of health, finances and education. So, for that to change, we need to just start locally with our own community and acknowledge the story of the past and that's why this is a truth telling document. The first draft, I remember reading it and thinking, oh, it's not going to be very easy to get this right because we've got so many clans in the area, each with their own history, they don't always align. So, I hope we have got this right, I do like what's been done and there's always room for learning, that's what this is all about, getting that conversation started. Australia does have a history of sweeping things under the carpet and we didn't get a lot of feedback during the draft process. For me, it is that conversation starter and a small step towards probably the ultimate goal, which is indigenous self determination and we have to start somewhere. So, the staff did a great job, the mayor's message at the start I thought was very, very good. Look forward to reading future plans and I hope it fosters relationships, understanding and trust within and between all our cultures.
Thank you very much, councillor Summer. Would any councillor wish to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak to the motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor. As with any plan, actions speak louder than words and it'll be very interesting to see how this evolves. Of course, it's only the first part of a process and one of the things that I'm particularly interested in is the relationship formed now with Reconciliation Australia and that various points in this plan will be, as part of that agreement, we'll be reporting those milestones to Reconciliation Australia. And also note that the, the second action plan, which is a milestone itself, is due in March 2020. That clock's ticking pretty quickly, that time will come around and so, as I said at the outset, actions speak louder than words. How will we test it against this plan is what we achieve, particularly in that first short period.
Thank you very much, councillor Hayesman. Would any other councillor wish to speak to the motion? I'd also just like to comment that it's been a very interesting process and I think it's really important to also acknowledge that we've included a lot of, a lot of the indigenous leaders across our community, as well as community members within the indigenous people. So, this is their document, it's us supporting reconciliation, I think it's us walking the talk, we speak every day of how we support our indigenous community and this is a testament to that, so it's a, it's a new document for us as council, it's a learning document and I think that's very important, we continue those continued relationships to make this what it needs to be. All right.
Madam Mayor, if I may, just acknowledge Kay and her staff's work in putting this together and working with the, closely with the Aboriginal community. It has been a significant task over a long period of time to pull this together, so, well done.
Very true, thank you very much, Kay. All right, we'll now go to the vote, all those in favour, against, motion carried, unopposed. Councillors, we'll now go to page 20, item 10.1, May 2019, monthly financial report and the recommendation is also on page 20. Would a councillor like to move a motion, please?
I'll move the recommendation on page 20, Madam Mayor, that the council receive and note the May 2019 monthly financial report.
Thank you very much, do I have a second please? Councillor Sutton. Councillor O'Savary, would you like to speak to the motion?
Through you, Madam Mayor, I'd invite Mr Titezel.
Thank you very much.
Give us an overview if he could.
That'd be very good, thank you.
My pleasure to do so. Councillors, just very quickly, we're almost at the end of the financial year, at this point only a couple of weeks to go, but, and the report shows our year to date results to the end of May. Still projecting an operating surplus for the year end of the 1819 financial year. Of note, the materials and services forecast has increased and we're showing an unfavourable variance on that line. I stress that is a forecast, but it is relatively accurate because it's reflecting some increased EPA costs as this supports what you say councillor Patterson around the EPA, some hack services costs and a few other contract costs in materials and services. I am still expecting it to be somewhat better than the variance that's shown there, but that will be either proven or disproven by year end. The 1819 result, it will also be improved by the early receipt of the financial assistance grant from the federal government. This grant is around the $6.5 million, it's half of next year's financial assistance grants, so they're paying that early for us, so that means our result for this year will be better. And the projected result in the budget that you'll consider in the next item of agenda has been adjusted to reflect that early receipt. This also inflates our year end working capital because it means we've got more cash on hand, so we look quite cash rich, I suppose, but that money will be spent in the 1920 budget. Capital Works is the interesting one, we're at 65% spent at the end of May with $15 million of capital works to go. A substantial proportion of that relates to some of the big projects that we've got on the go at the moment, particularly the Shepparton Art Museum, which you, if you've driven past that site, they're actively working there now, so there's a few million dollars to be spent there. And likewise, at Cosgrove Three, there's a few million dollars of spending that we'll see materialised by year end. Rates and sundry debtors are within reasonable limits and as I've said, the cash investments are high, but a lot of that will reduce in the coming 12 months with next year's capital budget.
Thank you very much, Mr Titezel. Councillor Sutton, would you like to speak to the motion? Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak to the motion?
I'd just like to make a general comment and it's been interesting watching it over the 12 months. The figures are falling into their relevant bands as we get closer and we're about to dock next year's budget, but we shouldn't forget about this one, of course, until we're finished with it and it's looking very good. Anyone would have to admit that it's, we've been very responsive with, and are responsive with our financial targets and meeting our commitments.
Thank you very much, councillor Patterson. Would any other councillor wish to speak to the motion? We will now go to the vote, all those in favour, against, motion carried, unopposed. Councillors, we now go to page 22, item 10.2, the budget for 2019-2020, would a councillor like to move a motion, please?
Madam Mayor, only if I can read out every page in detail.
That's fine, councillor Adam. It's quite an extensive recommendation, do we have a second please? Councillor O'Savary. Councillor Adam, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, obviously I won't read it in detail, it's over many pages. Look, this is the stellar document of councils' attention each year and I know we've been through a fairly hefty process over the past few months. I think we've given the community an ample opportunity to present their submissions in respect to the draft budget, which we released over a month ago, well over a month ago. You can't always please everyone in the community, but once again, I think we've really developed and produced a, an overarching budget that spends our rate payers' money in the best possible way that we think. So, I won't go into any detail, councils have been through this over many, many weeks, we've discussed it back and forth. Overall, there is some parts that I personally would like changed, but having said that, every change that you make affects another part of the budget as well, so overall, I'm very happy with this budget and I fully support it.
Thank you very much, councillor Adam. Councillor O'Savary, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, for the opportunity. Again, budget time, for me, the fact that we're maintaining 2.5% rate cap is a positive. I've always had a view that the fair go rates cap, where we are seeing annual 6% increases through councils is, was something that needed to stop and the review that's been placed in, put in place by the government is also a good thing. I think one of the underlying things that we as a council have to do is to deliver a fiscally responsible budget to demonstrate to our community that we've considered and arguably endorsed this budget in the best interest of our community, after all, it's their money. As councillor Adam briefly touched on, the fact that we've got our naysayers, our unhappy, our critical. However, the responsibility whilst they might have the last say is that we have the last act as councillors and we decide what's going to happen with that. The submitters that turned up and spoke, and it's one of the interesting things I find on my time on council, for such an important document, a large percentage of the population of our great community are ambivalent. It's, it's like, they, it's, it's a document which is accepted, they accept that there's a budget going to come out, but they forget that they have quite a lot of input in relation to it and they don't take that opportunity. Case in point was Mr Jared McKinley of Dukie, who's a farmer in the area and he came and he spoke to us and he made a number of valid points in relation to his issues with the farm rate and I think that was very good and I think that's something that would be, should be considered in the discussions going up to the 2021. But in terms of councillor Adam, he also said that there were some issues in the council budget which he didn't agree with and I similarly share those views. But on the plus side, there's a number of positives. Particularly like the aspect that the safer city camera network stage two is going to be rolled out. The question of solar is very, very good. There's also an aspect in relation to Princess Park, which is behind us here, which I'm very happy about because finally, despite the fact that the master plan took an inordinately long time to get to the drawing board and to be, start to be implemented, there's a number of projects which are included in the capital works area, namely the lighting upgrade, the irrigation, there's also design going to be happening in relation to Goian Reserve. We've got the irrigation happening, we've got the facilities precinct detailed design as well. So, all this stands in good stead to develop that area, which I've often had a view of, has wreaked a neglect unfortunately and this is definitely a step in the right direction. Another thing that I'm very positive about is the fact that there seems to be this view that Victoria Park Lake presents this fantastic vista at the front, but at the back of the lake, it unfortunately doesn't have the same level of attention and I note that there's a budgetary item in there which will...
That's time, councillor O'Savary. Do we have extension, 30 seconds?
Okay. It's, Tom Collins Drive is an example where Victoria Park Lake and Tom Collins Drive, there should be a whole, a totality principle applied with a whole area is maintained because ultimately, that area is reflective of our city and all the statistics and everything say that Victoria Park Lake is the place that a lot of people associate Greater Shepparton with. And, look, on balance, I think it's, it's a responsible budget.
Good.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, councillor O'Savary. Any councillor like to speak against the motion? Councillor Summer?
Sorry, it's not a criticism of the document itself, it's not a criticism of the staff, we put so much work into this. We've been briefed multiple times, we've had face to face, we've had explanations. Staff have gone over and above making sure that we understand this budget, which is fantastic. I just, there's two reasons why and they seem to be recurring, obviously the sand projects, but I won't get into that because you all know how I feel about that, and also the municipal charge. I've got heaps written down about the municipal charge, I just, I don't know if it's worth getting into because it is kind of complex and never really reported accurately. But I will say that if we did take away the municipal charge, it would free up disposable income for people and you can see even in the recommendation, that's nearly $6 million of, of money that would most likely be spent locally instead of going up to the top end rate payers. Also pleased we're keeping the state cap, we've got lots of projects on the go and even our curbside collection only has a modest increase, 1.8 I think, and that doesn't actually go into general rates. It's required to go towards other waste management initiatives. When people choose a larger general waste bin, there's a deliberate disincentive, it gets quite expensive. That's to encourage more recycling and discourage landfill. People should get involved, you can see in the back of this document, appendix C, it's quite long. These are all the changes that we've made since the draft budget came out and quite a lot of movement there. What hasn't moved is the farming rate, as was mentioned. I personally don't think sharp rate rises to a few individual properties should be grounds to redistribute differentials for all of the zones. I think farming's already subsidised quite a lot, but it is a conversation moving forward that we can have. Still have a concern about not being allowed to pay the full payment at one time. Lots of people last year had a comment about that, but very little this year, so hopefully people are evolving and, and working out how to manage it with instalments. I probably should talk about the Botanic Gardens, who were quite passionate in their submissions. I don't believe council's given up on that project, I do think it's a shame that at the outset there wasn't that level of planning required to give us that whole of life costing and that large commitment because it is a huge site, it would cost millions. And that's not just for the capital spend of the maintenance out there. I mean, we're in a drought, people are looking for water and it's probably not the time of the century to be watering a landfill area, no matter how many people go out there. But, yeah, we certainly have not given up on it, it's going to be maintained and maybe we can revisit it again in the future when we don't have so many large projects on the go.
Thank you councillor Summer. Any councillor wish to speak to the motion? Councillor Abdullah?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I would just like to highlight a few points. Obviously, the council budget, council's budget has been prepared taking into account key financial principles such as to generate an operating surplus, which this budget has clearly done, to do responsible management of existing assets and responsible borrowing. Total expenditure, sorry, this budget includes a significant capital works programme of $73.68 million. The document provides details of all capital works projects, including property, which includes new sand, Titura Library redevelopment, installation of solar on council buildings and so on and so forth. Capital works programme also includes plant and equipment, so I was particularly pleased to see budget allocation for public wifi projects, nearly $1 million and of course, electric vehicle charging stations for councils' own premises. Infrastructure, now, out of this capital works programme, infrastructure budget allocation of $36.9 million is pretty significant. Also, I've been sort of comparing it with some of the similar organised, similar councils and obviously our capital works budget is pretty significant compared to those councils, which is a good thing, which basically shows that it's going to contribute to our local economic growth, it's going to provide job opportunities in our municipality, so it's all good. This infrastructure budget includes road upgrades such as Maud Street upgrade, $3 million and Balaklava Werny Road Intersection upgrade, it also includes curb and channels, road seating programmes, bridges, footpaths and cycleways and so on and so forth. and cycleways and so on and so forth. So all the details of capital works project are included in the budget document. Another point that I would like to point out is that in this year's budget, council has opted for major cash utilisation for capital works instead of borrowings. So there are zero borrowings in this year's, in 2019-20 budget. And of course, the rationale is that it would be financially irresponsible to seek borrowings when council has high working capital. Hence, there are no borrowings for capital works in this budget. So I'm happy with the budget, saying that yes, there's responsibility. There's a lot of responsibility, hard work and commitment that has gone into the development of this budget. The whole process has been very engaging for councillors and staff and of course, community as well. So in the end, I would like to thank our council staff for preparation of this budget document. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Abdullah. Would any councillor wish to speak against the motion? Would any councillor wish to speak to the motion?
I'd just like to make a couple of comments.
Councillor Patterson?
I'll say it's been seven years and it's good to see that councillor Summer still has a passion about the municipal charge. It comes out and if I ever buy a horse, that's what I'm going to call it. Municipal charge, it just keeps coming up and coming and coming. But there is a fallacy that would be $6 million better off for people to have in their pocket to spend. It's not the case at all. It is just a matter of it being redispersed and other people have to pay that $6 million. The municipal charge is set up so everyone that has a ratable property pays something, an equal standard, to the basic needs of the council. And then we go ahead and charge on capital improved value. A couple of things. One thing I'm really happy to see is the Marupan Centre Tarpe. It's in there. It really is a bit of indictment and I congratulate the Marupan Rotary Club for putting the work into it. To have people go to war and die and not be recognised in some form officially, in a memorial, probably a bit of indictment on us all. That has now been corrected, so I congratulate the club for that. That's a great thing. The Tankle Gardens, there's not a cut there at all. There is actually an increase. It's just not in capital. It is in services now and it is a great project. And people sometimes think I'm against it. It's a great project. It's a great future, but it's going to take a long time to develop it. And we can't do everything at once. I'd also like to congratulate the staff that have been involved in making this budget. It's been going on for probably eight, 10 months since it first started. A hell of a lot of work working through the processes. And as councillors, we get to sit at the very end of it and tick this off and shy away from that. To the staff that have put that work in, I congratulate them. It's a great budget. And I do note that Warrnambool has got, have requested and been granted an extension of their 2.5% rate capping to put in some walking paths. We have still not got to that stage. We're still working within our means, which we should. And I encourage council to continue to work on that. So yeah, generally, a terrific budget. It's always hard. Love to have more money to help more people. We just can't do it. We're responsible. And I believe this budget is responsible.
Thank you very much, councillor Patterson. Would any councillor wish to speak against the motion? Would any councillor wish to speak to the motion?
Madam Mayor, could I also acknowledge Chris and his staff for the good work? They always do. Around budget time, it is significant, an annual task. Also emphasise that there were 27 submissions and six of those presented. And the council have been able to accommodate most of those submissions, not all, but most. And that is something we try to do every year. And I think that's a significant task in itself, responding to those who make submissions in a positive manner.
Thank you very much. Councillor Adam, would you wish to speak to your right of reply?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a brief couple of comments. I've been listening to some of the councillors. And I think that's great that they've all got different opinions and views. And that's what this whole debate and discussion is about. But effectively, we have a finite income at this council, effectively, that does vary slightly. And it all needs to be budgeted. And obviously, it's based on priorities. And this document has formulated the priorities and that's how they've come out. But just quickly, on a couple of notes. Councillor Patterson talked about the Botanic Gardens. As did councillor Summer. Effectively, there is a reduction because the additional committee was set up to actually develop the garden, not the maintenance side of things. So they had a $35,000 hit this year. But that said, I know they're not happy about it. And personally, that was one of my drives. But effectively, within the whole budget, it fits in because the maintenance has increased. So effectively, it's a larger number, but not for the actual development of the garden. But that said, overall, I think it's a great budget and I fully support it.
Thank you very much, councillor Adam. We will now go to the vote. All those in favour? Against? Motion carried. Councillors, we now go to page 32, item 10.3, Contracts Awarded Under Delegation and Contracts Advertised But Yet To Be Awarded. The recommendation is also on page 32. Would a councillor like to move a motion, please?
Madam Mayor, I'll move the recommendation printed on page 32 of the agenda.
Thank you very much, councillor Hazeman. Do I have a second, please? Councillor O'Seary? Councillor Hazeman, would you like to speak to the motion?
No, Madam Mayor. It's an administrative process that occurs every month. It's just interesting to be able to see what's in the pipeline.
Thank you very much, councillor O'Seary. Would you like to speak to the motion? Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak to the motion? Councillor Summer?
Just quickly, I live near Balaklava Pakem Street. And there's a lot of work going on there with the construction of the footpaths. And it's fantastic. We've got tarkula for older residents and people who would love to utilise the river. So linking up all those footpaths is a really good effort, in my opinion.
Thank you very much, councillor Summer. Would any councillor wish to speak to the motion? We will now go to the vote. All those in favour? Against? Motion carried and opposed. Councillors, now go to page 36, item 10.4, Reappointment of the Chief Executive Officer Who Has A Conflict. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Would a councillor like to move the recommendation? Councillor Adam?
I'll just wait for the CEO to exit the room. Yeah, I'll read it out. There's a slight change in the recommendation or the motion. So I'll read it out. The council, point one, place a public notice in Shepparton News on Friday 28th of June 2019, outlining council's intention to reappoint the chief executive officer at the July 2019 Ordinary Council Meeting. Point two, note the reappointment of the chief executive officer would, rather than will, be effective from 4th of January 2020.
Do I have a second, please?
Yeah, I'll take a second.
Councillor Hazeman? Councillor Adam, do you wish to speak to the motion?
I think it's pretty self-explanatory. Those two points are pretty clear.
Councillor Hazeman, would you like to speak? Sorry, have you finished there, councillor Adam?
Oh, it's very straightforward. This is a requirement of the Act to advertise our intent. And the substantive motion will come at the July meeting.
Would any councillor wish to speak against the motion? Would any councillor wish to speak to the motion? Councillor Summer?
I'd always see eye to eye with the CEO and everything, but I do think the direction of councils in general, it's quite good. It's innovative. We're working as a team, which is great. I think what, I had a lot more to say and I might just leave it there. But I do think that he's doing a pretty good job.
Very good. Glad to hear that. Thank you very much, councillor Summer. Would any councillor like to speak to the motion? We will now go to the vote.
Comments because she moved against. Did you speak against?
No, she spoke to.
No, Boris.
No, she spoke to, to the motion. So we now go to the vote. All those in favour? Against? Motion carried and opposed. Mr. Harriet, can you come back? Councillors, we now go to page 39, item 10.5, Appointment of councillor representative to the Aerodrome Advisory Committee. The recommendation is also on page 39. Would a councillor like to move a motion, please? Councillor Patterson? What would you like to move?
Yes, I'd like to move motion on page 39. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second, Adam?
I'll second the motion.
Councillor Adam? Councillor Patterson, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, I'd love to, actually. I am the representative on the council rep, sorry, on the Aerodrome Committee. I'm finding it increasingly difficult to make that time. And I've had discussion and councillor Sutton has willingly, thank God, put her hand up so she can take that position. I've also been there five years. And I think five years is a long time to be on one particular committee. And I think this is a different set of circumstances that I have another meeting that coincides. But I think as we go on, we've been around for a while. And we probably should be limiting ourselves to how long we sit on one particular committee. You become too comfortable, I suppose you could say. You don't have the fresh ideas regarding that committee you first had when you went on. And I would like to encourage council over the next few years to consider a bit of a rotation and not necessarily stepping back on the same committee you come off at the change of terms. I think that would make the whole place a lot healthier, bring new ideas to committees. And yeah, there's a few there that I probably should be shifting off as well. But I'm just happy to be off this one. And allow councillor Sutton, who does a lovely swirl in an aeroplane apparently, to take my vote.
Very good. Thank you, councillor Patterson. Councillor Adam, would you like to speak to the motion?
I'd just like to thank councillor Patterson for his term on that committee. He's done a great job. Always reports back to us all the different things that are happening on that committee. And I'd like to congratulate councillor Sutton. There was some competition for this position, believe it or not. Yeah, it was me, but anyway, congratulations. I'm sure you did a fantastic job as well.
Thank you, councillor Adam. Would any councillor wish to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak to the motion? Councillor Sutton?
I'd just like to say I'm very happy to take over this position from Dennis. And I'm looking forward to working with the Aerodrome Advisory Committee. And who knows, I might learn to fly one day.
Thank you very much. Would any councillor wish to speak to the motion?
Ah, yes, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Hazeman?
I'd just like to note the very humble way in which councillor Patterson moved the motion to thank himself.
It's been duly noted.
Thank you, councillor Hazeman. Would any councillor wish to speak to the motion? I'd also like to thank councillor Patterson for his five years of dedication. It's a long term. Well done. And we're looking forward to councillor Sutton, obviously, bringing something new to the committee and some interesting conversations. We'll now go to the vote.
I'd just like to say that I've enjoyed keeping my feet on the ground and being well.
Okay, we'll now go to the vote. All those in favour? Against? Motion carried and opposed. Councillors, now go to page 42, Reports From Councillors, nil received. We'll now go to item 12, which is reports from special and advisory committees. We have item 12.1, which is councillor Patterson's report on River Connect Implementation Advisory Committee. Would a councillor like to move a motion, please?
I'll move, well, you want to do that, tell us, you can do it.
No, I'm happy someone else does it.
I'll move the motion as described on all those pages. Oh, not the report, sorry. Described on page forty-three. I'm having difficulty.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second, please? Councillor Hazeman? Councillor Adam, would you like to speak to the motion?
Only that I'd like to thank councillor Patterson for providing that report. I'm sure it's fairly extensive and it does relay a lot of important information to councillors who otherwise may not have been aware of it. So I thank councillor Patterson for that.
Very much, councillor Hazeman. Would you like to speak to the motion? Would any councillor wish to speak against the motion?
Councillor Patterson, would you like to speak against it, actually?
Would any councillor? Would any councillor wish to speak to the motion?
Yes, I would, actually. Thank you.
Councillor Patterson, that would be very good.
This used to be a pretty regular occurrence on council, councillors speaking to the committees they're on. River Connect, as most people know, it's funded by council and Catchet Management Authority. It's been going for several years. I've been involved about seven or eight years. They do a terrific job. It's about refocusing people back on the river in our wetlands. A lot of the issues are rubbish dumping, et cetera. But tourism, as far as showing people what part of the river is accessible, getting people back on the river. We've had the Catchet Management Authority Board paddle down the river and show them what a great asset. We've got councillors done that. We've paddled from Roop to Shepparton and shown people what a great asset we have here. The biggest part of River Connect's charter to me is the education process. We still have a lot of trouble with rubbish dumping along the river. Whilst we can try and work on that, the best way of doing that is through an education process for the younger kids. And the two offices, get a lot of school groups down there, take them down through the river, show them what's there. Show them the things along the bush that they wouldn't normally know. They wouldn't have seen in the schoolroom. So they're learning about the outdoor environment. They're learning about our river. They're learning about our bush. Also, it's very important, the health of the river. And in my other position as Region Two Chair of the Murray Darling Association, I'm going to Canberra tomorrow and addressing the Murray Darling Authority, exactly on the health of the river, because it is in a terrible, terrible state, as we know. And I'm pretty sure they won't know about it. They will this time tomorrow, believe me. So it has many, many different points where this programme is really good for our kids, good for our region, and more importantly, good for our river. We all turned our back on the river when we first started to develop the country, the town. And now we're realising what a great asset we have there. And we're turning our attention back to it and facing our offices towards it. Instead of using it as a sewer, we're using it as an asset. And that's exactly what it is. And that has to continue because it's a great asset and most towns don't have. It's the biggest heritage river in Victoria. And we've got it running right through our two major cities. So it's very important. So I'd encourage other councillors to do their reports on their separate committees. And it's a good way of showing the ratepayers, the work that goes on behind the scenes and the efforts that people are putting into our city in different aspects. And I congratulate the two girls on the work they do at River Connect. They do a terrific job.
Thank you very much, councillor Patterson. Would any councillor wish to speak to the motion? We will now go to the vote. All those in favour? Against? Motion carried and opposed. Councillors, we now go to page 44, item 13, Notice of Motion Amendment or Recision, nil received. Item 14, Documents For Signing And Sealing. Item 14.1, Documents For Signing And Sealing. The recommendation is also on page 44. Would a councillor like to move a motion, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I'll move the recommendation printed on page 44.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second, please?
I'll second the motion.
Councillor Adam? Councillor Hazeman, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor. This is somewhat of a rare occurrence. I don't recall one of these, at least in recent times. And the fact that it's not covered by the delegation would probably confirm how rare it actually is. So basically, it's an administrative process to ensure that the supply of water to the Talamba Recreation Reserve is maintained and the licence agreement with Golden Murray Water be signed and operating.
Thank you very much. Councillor Adam, would you like to speak to the motion?
I hear you say that, as councillor Hazeman would say, it's quite rare. But I'm surprised it's as rare as it is.
Okay, thank you very much. Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor wish to speak to the motion? We will now go to the vote. All those in favour? Against? Motion carried and opposed. Councillors, we now go to page 45, item 15.1, Councillor's Community Interaction And Briefing Programme. The recommendation is on page 46. Would a councillor like to move a motion, please?
With the recommendation, Madam Mayor, on page 46, summary of councillor community interaction and briefing programme, be received and recorded of the assembly of the councillors be noted.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second, please? Councillor Sutton? Councillor O'Seary, would you like to speak to the motion? Councillor Sutton, would you like to speak to the motion?
I would just to say that it's an indication of the councillor's interaction with the community. And it shows quite a few things there that we do. So it's just letting the community know that we are out there.
Thank you very much. Would any councillor wish to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak to the motion? We will now go to the vote. All those in favour? Against? Motion carried and opposed. Councillors, we now go to page 47, item 16, Urgent Business Not Included On The Agenda, nil received. That is everything completed tonight. I now declare the meeting closed at 6.30. Thank you very much, everyone.